Okay, I'll call the meeting to order for April 22nd, 2020, special meeting of council. Result of the agenda for the April 22nd, 2020, special meeting of council be approved. Moved by Deputy Mayor Win Tony, seconded by Council Friesen. All in favor? Let's carry. Result of council, open the public hearing for Biolog III, 2020, to provide for the expenditure and borrowing of funds for Main Street water and sewer renewal. Moved by Council Doyier, seconded by Council White. All in favor? Opposed? Let's carry. I guess before I get there, I do thank everyone here tonight that aren't participating in the public hearing. There's a few councilors here in the room, Council Friesen, some may not be able to see, or I guess you can't see her. But we also have Councilors White, Gray, and Morio, as you can see on your screens tonight, attending by Zoom. We have two hearings. The first is for Biolog III, 2020, for the Main Street water and sewer rehabilitation. The second's for the 2020 financial plan hearing. What I ask, if you have a question, please click your raised hand on your devices, on your button on the bottom of your screen, which I will be able to see, and you'll be able to attend the meeting and ask your specific questions. This will let us know when you want to speak. When we call on you, we will unmute you, and you'll be able to make your presentation. Please keep it brief. You'll have a maximum of 10 minutes, so we allow everyone the opportunity for input. We have a short presentation also on the financial plan, and we'll take questions once that is done. So on the public hearing for the Main Street rehabilitation, I can open it up for any discussion, councilors or anyone else. Council Doyier.
Just one clarification. On the public notice on the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th bullet point, it says that we'll make the payment out of the general fund, but we can, it could be reduced by a time limit in the utility fund. Is the plan, the plan is to use the utility fund to pay for this, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Yes, okay.
Any further discussion? We have one from Reed Minish. This is a new process for all of us, so just hang in there and work with us here, but we'll have the first presentation, Mr. Minish, in a second.
Yep, unmute yourself there now.
Reed will need you to unmute yourself. Okay, go ahead.
What I was asking, what budget are we working with? My understanding from watching the meeting last night that you had more than one budget you were looking at? So the one that the public had access to, is that the one we're talking about, or a different one?
Well, right now, we're on the, on the public hearing on the general, are on the, the Main Street rehabilitation. Biolog.
Exactly.
Oh, you're talking about later, like which budget we're talking about?
Right.
We're talking about...
The budget was newly uploaded sometime this afternoon, and that was the one with the changes.
Okay, so it was uploaded, and where will they find that?
On the website.
On our website, you'll be able to find that updated budget.
Under the public notices.
Under public notices.
Well, do you think the public's had enough time to look at that now? In fact, this is the first time we've heard about it.
Well, it's, it's not much of a, it's slight change, it's no increases in it. It's very similar to what we had in our Budget A, our first one that you would see.
How do I disconnect now?
Did you have a question about the Main Street renewal?
No.
Okay. Stan? Give us one second.
Should be able to unmute.
Okay, go ahead, Stan. Stan? Does he have to unmute himself?
No, he's unmuted there.
Okay, so why aren't we hearing him? Is there any reason for Reed Minish still on the screen there?
Yeah, I just muted him, but he's still there, so...
Stan, we can't hear you at all.
Audio issues.
Are you having some issues with your internet? Is there a way that he can call in?
He is calling.
You can call in, it'd be a number at the bottom of the email, or they can call, call in via phone.
Okay. Do we know what that number is?
It'll be an email that he's got, that where he registered.
Stan, I guess there's a number in your email that you can call in, maybe you can ask that question? I don't know. We're waiting for Stan? I, I, if we can't make connection with Stan, then we have to move on?
I don't know. Uh, this, this Biolog, is this related to the project that was done, just done right here, a long way? Is that all related?
This is the work that's going to be done on Main Street West from the CN tracks to Highway 83.
I'm working over at Timepiece Repair.
If we don't have a call from Stan? That number is in the email that he has, that he can call in?
Yeah.
Any of our attendees, if we're having difficulties making connection with you, or vice versa, there is a phone number that you can call directly in the email that you had from Ms. Hinkleman.
Correct.
If you can call that, we'll give you a few more minutes, Stan. Otherwise, we gotta move on.
If you can't find the email, maybe you can share the number with them.
Technology. Say that again, slower. And that phone, that can be dialed from the line line? And it'll come to this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Stan, can you try that, please?
Here, well...
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, thanks, Stan.
Oh, you're so loud, so loud.
There is a little bit of an echo there. I don't know if it's because you're close to your computer or what.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, is that okay there now?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we can't. Okay, so I'm talking on my phone, watching you on my desktop, and watching you on my tablet. Can anybody hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so what I wanted to know is, I wanted a copy of the budget yesterday, and I guess due to that special meeting that you had to deal with last night, I never got to see the budget. So I went on Facebook today looking for it, and I can't seem to find it. So I have zero figures in front of me. The last statement I have is from December 31st, 2018. Nothing to go on tonight.
It's on the page. It's on the website.
It's, yeah, Stan, it's on our website.
Well, I've been on your website, and I can't find it today.
If you go...
Um, no.
Ms. Hinkleman will tell you how to do that.
If you go to public notices...
Okay, there.
No...
Can I go into Swanover?
I don't think, I don't know if notices show up there. If you go to the website, public notices, you can just on the front page, click More, and go down to Public Notice. For April 22nd, you click on there, and you'll see both the original budget and the new budget. You can click on it.
Okay, so I go, so I go to the town of Swanover website? Not Facebook, not the app?
Right, if you go to, if you go to the page, the website.
Okay, let me just get into that. I don't want to, I don't want to take up anybody's time, but I do want to... Okay, so I'm, I'm on the website here now, and it's got Contact Us. So I'll just go right into the website. And it sort of takes me in a lot, it looks like the app. So public hearings, regular council meeting, training, vote now? Where do you want me to go?
It should, under Public Notices, you should be able to click More Notices.
Under Public Notices?
On the front page, yeah.
It's called Menu? In the menu?
No, just on the, like on the main page.
On the main page, it's just a picture, and it says Read More. It says Latest News, Public Hearing.
Yeah, so if you see Latest News, it says View All Notices. Right under there, click that.
Okay, View All Notices.
And then you go Public Hearings, April 22nd.
Uh, hearings, April 22nd, okay?
Okay, and then you'll see April 22nd, there's the original financial plan, and then it says Updated Financial Plan, April 22nd. If you click that, you will get the updated one.
Okay, so, and it's only one I need to look at, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Do you have any questions on the, the Main Street West renewal project?
The, I just wanted to understand that you're going to renew the water and sewer and all the stubout, spill of properties from Third Avenue to Highway 83, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And...
No, from the CN train tracks on Main Street to Highway 83.
That's correct. So, so what are you doing about, about the hurting traffic that go down to Second Street North?
Mr. Kroll?
Uh, no, it'll be First Street South, and then they'll take a left onto Third Avenue and take the corner just west of the way, the tracks to get onto Main Street. We'll, we will have to close that intersection, where we will have to bring everyone to, to crossing north of Main Street for a very short period of time. But for the, for a very large portion of the project, the traffic will be routed off the highway onto First Street, so then onto Third Street, heading north, and we'll use that intersection to get back on Main Street.
Okay, so you're going to start at, at First Street, or First Avenue then, and work backwards towards traffic?
Uh, First Street South, yeah.
Okay, good. Oh, I meant First Avenue South to work your way back to the tracks. Are you starting at the tracks and going towards Highway 83?
Uh, I can say, if you're headed west down Main Street, you will cross the tracks, and you'll immediately hang a left onto Third Avenue South. And as soon as you hit First Street South, you'll take a right right to the highway.
Okay, okay, okay. That's, that's about all. I'm just going to start kind of reading on this new Biolog here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And, and if you need to phone in again, or when we, later on, if you raise your hand, we'll get you to phone in again. You can see me.
Yeah.
Oh, he's...
I'll just, I'll just leave my phone on here.
Oh, okay.
Can I do that?
Oh, I see. Yeah, yeah, that's fine. I thought you had to come in and out, so, okay. Um, so can you maybe re, re, uh, repeat for those that maybe are having a hard time finding that financial plan?
Okay, so if you are having trouble, go to the Swanover Manitoba website. Um, on the main page, you will see, um, let me get back to it here. Uh, you just scroll down, it says Latest News in orange. There's Submitted Notice, and then View All Notices. Click the View All Notices, and scroll down until you see Public Hearings for April 22nd. If you click on that, um, the first link is the original financial plan. The second one, it says Updated Financial Plan, April 22nd. That is the one you click, and that's the latest one that we're looking at.
Thank you for doing that, and we do apologize, but we're trying to work through this technology, this thing right now, we're trying out, so... Um, so is there any further discussion on the Main Street renewal West? If there is none, result that council now close the public hearing of Biolog III, 2020. Moved by Deputy Mayor Win Tony, seconded by Council Morio. Discussion, all in favor? Opposed? Let's carry. Result of council, open the 2020 financial plan public hearing. Moved by Deputy Mayor Win Tony, seconded by Council Friesen. All in favor? Opposed? Let's carry. So what we'll do firstly is have Mr. Kroll do the budget presentation and the financial plan.
Oh, I'm good. I just need to see the screen there. Okay, so if everybody can see the screen out in TV land, uh, so we'll go to the second page. So the second page is just the, the general rules that Manitoba has for, for public hearing rules. So they're just the basic, how do we conduct ourselves at meetings? So everything, all questions are to go through the chair. The chair is, is Mayor Jacobson. And all, all councilors are required to attend unless they're, unless they're excused. All councilors are attending even by, even by electronic means. The chair has, has the full discretion to set the limit, and I think previously he has set the limit at 10 minutes maximum for a, for a presentation to the council. And, and then questions can be asked further from the council to the presenter from there. Hey, there we go. Okay, so now we're on page three. Okay, so in the budget, everybody, everybody's interested in mill rates. That's the big thing that they want to know about. So, um, just to take you back a little bit, we had, we had set a budget, a normal budget, just like most towns had. Well, we hadn't set it. We had, we had, you know, argued and discussed it out and, and came to terms with the fact that we, we had a budget. And because this COVID-19 virus came along, it changed the dynamics quite a bit for, for not only the town, but across Canada, across the world. Uh, so the Minister of Municipal Relations sent us a letter late last week, effectively instructing all municipalities to review their, their budget that they were going to have going forward, because as the minister knew, pretty much all towns across the province are, are at that point where the budget was effectively built. Uh, so we had to go back and, and spend the weekend redoing budget for, for council to consider. So we, we, in the end, we ended up building three, three budgets. Uh, one is a worst-case scenario in case we end up going to a complete depression, and, and then another one was when things are getting pretty bad. And the, the original was the, the one for just normal, if this virus hadn't happened. So, uh, in, in reviewing all those budgets, council came to terms with the fact that they would like to go with the, the middle one, which causes to, causes some restrictions to happen on the, on the budget and, and makes, makes a good number of changes. Uh, but they're all, they're all effectively reductions. So in the end, what we had for last year's budget, uh, the mill rate was 22.308. And what we're proposing to council at this point is 21.278. And that's what council has, feels, um, is a fair mill rate to, to go forward for this year. As you can see, near the bottom, it says the service charges that are set in dollar amounts. Um, the wellness center's $59.73, which is the same as last year. Residential waste is $158.33, which is the same as last year. And taken from, I can't remember what page it is, but the municipal taxes and grants and lieu from, from our local areas So next page, over there? No, okay. Uh, so this is the general overview. I don't know why I've got two here. So this is last year's budget as compared to this year's budget as a, a sort of benchmarking where the budget was last year and, and where the budget is planned to go to this year. So as you can see, um, from the mill rates, the mill rates are going down by $172,124. Grants and lieu are going down $18,254. School requisition is going down $48,209. And we have other revenue going up slightly by $8,385. Uh, so it gives a grand total of, uh, uh, which is a, which is a reduction of $133,785. So to break that down, to break that down on, on the spending side, what, what the different departments are, are going to be using for 2020 is, um, general government is $797,824, $797,824. It's going up by $40,382. Protective services is going from $1,499,981 to $1,661,561, which is an increase of $161,580. Part of that is to do with the fact that we have to put some money in there because we've been notified by the RCMP that the bill is likely to go up. And so we have to take that into account. Uh, transportation is going up by $16,935 The trash and recycling is going up by $77,205, is going from $1,181,000 to 150 to $1,258,355. Public health is going up by $61,000 from $141,687 to $202,829. Regional planning is going down by $6,000, down to $31,535. Resource and industrial development is going down by $24,841 from $133,005 to $108,164. Recreation is going from $1,621,857 to $1,403,303, which is a reduction of $221,554. Fiscal services is going down by $34,121. Deficit recovery is going up by $3,099. And the transfers to reserves is going to be set at $408,020, which is a reduction of $227,550 from last year. Allowance tax assets is going up by $20,073. Sorry for reading that out, but some people have some difficulty with discerning the difference between the two, so sometimes it's just easier to read it out. Um, in the pie chart, all presentations have to have a pie chart, so here's ours. Well, it's the same numbers we just, we just read about in pie form, which is, why not pie form? Yeah, so it's the same thing. It's just some people understand numbers a little bit better when, when it is in a chart. So that's, that's where we're at with the chart, is, is the exact same as the page before. Okay? Uh, so there's a comparison by property values for this year, and I'm not reading them out, but generally, it's a decrease across the board. Uh, somewhere in the neighborhood of 4.6%, something like that. Um, but basically, a lot of houses in town are in the 100 to 250,000 range. And as you can see there, you know, if you have a $100,000 house, the property, the municipal portion of your taxes is, is set to go down by $46. And if you have a $250,000 house, it will go down by $116. The commercial properties, same thing. Uh, there's going to be a, a nice reduction there. It's not, it's not fabulous, but it is nice to have a, have a reduction. I know last year was a difficult year, but we, we, you know, you basically got to do, what you got to do to pay the bills, and that's what we had to do. So with these changes this year, at least there's some relief in the taxes, so... So these are, these are some of the items in the capital portion of the Public Works Department this year. There's not too many glamorous things that Public Works is doing. Uh, there's going to be a PLC upgrade in the water treatment plant, and, which is $350,000. A backhoe for $98,000. K at the end of the numbers, if anybody doesn't understand. K just means 1,000. Um, some survey equipment for $15,000, and a service truck for $80,000. And the garbage truck is, is $300,000, so that's where we're at. For the pool, uh, there's, there's some things going on at the pool that need to be addressed, and we're going to address them in the, in the cheapest way possible while doing it correctly. And so we, we set the number, and the reason we had to set the number fairly high, we were hoping that it'll come in, we're, we're planning that it will come in quite a bit below this number, $600,000, is that we don't have the first bids in yet, but we do need to set aside enough to be able to do it. Uh, we do know that the HVAC needs some substantial work. Uh, the Whirlpool needs some substantial work, and the Envelope will need some, some work done to it as well to remediate it from the damage that's been caused from the HVAC, uh, correct? from the damage that's been caused from the HVAC not correctly operated. And that's about all we have, I think. So are there any questions?
Okay, so thank you, Mr. Crowe. And like I said, Mr. Crowe had said that we've gone through this budget process for quite a few months actually already. And we had also debated a lot of the parts of the budget. And now with us heading into COVID, we have to relook at the budget, as the minister had asked us to do so. So I just want to say that, you know, council had debated quite a bit on protective services part of it. Crime strategies has been a huge part of that discussion. Council's still moving forward and feel the importance of focusing on economic development. And especially at this time, we need to move forward and focus on what the priorities and priorities are going to be moving forward. So anyways, with that, if anybody has any questions, and I'll start with Council Dorian.
I just wanted to make a comment because we may have got some raised eyebrows when Mr. Crowe went over the reserve contributions. They're down $227,000 over last year. Last year was an anomalous year in the fact that the federal gas tax, we got a bonus amount from the federal government. They doubled our federal gas tax contribution for one year and one year only. So the actual amount that the town is putting into the reserves has stayed about the same over the last number of years. There is debate over whether that should be increased or decreased, but I guess I just wanted to clarify that we didn't actually contribute less than we had previously as far as what's coming from the local taxpayers.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Reed.
Two questions. Last night I watched Jeremy, and there was a discussion with Wayne regarding the medical fees in your promotion for doctors. And Mr. White seemed unwilling to change his position on that. And yet, this is a responsibility of the province, not so much of the town itself. Is that open for discussion still, or does the rest of the public feel that this is necessary? And the second part of my question is, I also see that there's a large increase out at the airport this year from $27,000, actually last year, to $66,000 this year. And Charles sent me a note today, but I need more explanation on that for appeal.
Okay, so I'll answer the first one on the doctor recruitment fund. As far as your question goes, is that still debatable? And I will say, yes, actually after the meeting last, or during the meeting last night, that was said that it was something that we would have to discuss and perhaps talk with our municipal partners on that. Councilor White did mention, and I think he will speak on that, but it's still, I would say it's still up for debate because we have not made a decision on that yet. Councilor White, you can respond.
Well, everything's up for debate, absolutely. But in the 12 or 14 years I've been on council, the G5, G4, whatever number we are now, that has been the only thing that I thought we have been at this supporting. All the valley, not just the town of Swan River realizes that we need to expand its healthcare and we're not quick to keep all the doctors we have, that's reality. And if we slow down, it's like not advertising, business is going well, we can slow down. I think in fact we may consider increasing our activity of the medical recruitment.
So then Reed, on the second question with the airport commission, Councilor Wintoni is on that commission, are you comfortable with answering that question?
I'm not, I'm not ready for that one just yet. I think Mr. Poole can help me out on that.
Mr. Poole and Mr. Crowe?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Reed, basically, the airport budget was increased by $34,000. And that's basically a representation of the town administration's time at the airport. Previously, the town would eat that cost, but in 2020, we are deciding that that is, we're putting our true expenses to the airport, and that's what that number represents.
I can respond to that.
Yeah, go ahead.
A long time ago, I was involved in the organization of the airport commission for the community. And this was a viable project for what they called the G7 at that time, I think. Is this falling apart on us now, or is the town going to be carrying this by themselves? Or what is really going on?
Well, there are a lot of pieces to the puzzle. Each municipality does contribute to the airport. But I guess as far as the town is concerned, we have to show our true costs. And it's important to know that the other half of that $30,000 is upgrades, upgrades to the infrastructure. And that we don't have to spend all of that. That's basically a decision of the airport commission. But the town's budget to get that work done is represented in that number. If the commission decides to not do as much maintenance, that number will not be that high.
I ask what the total budget is for the airport commission, though.
A budget for the 2020 year has not been set by the commission.
You respond or ask, tell me what it was last year, so we can get a comparison, something to look at.
Mr. Minish, I do not have, I am the chair of the airport commission. I did not bring my files specifically to the airport commission. The airport commission hasn't met since about October of 2019. So the commission hasn't met to go over any of the budget for the 2020 year. And in regards to the increase or the numbers reflected from the town, that has been status quo for a number of years. It'll be up to the commission now to tender out the, if that is what we want or what the commission decides, is to tender out the administrative services that we've been billed for from the town for that. But I think that the billing for it hasn't changed in quite some time, and the numbers, true numbers aren't reflective there.
Well, is administrative costs coming out of the town office, or are they coming out of the equipment that runs up and downs the pavement out there? Which is it?
Once more, say your question again, please.
The administrative costs that you referred to here is the true costs that should reflect on what the town's costs are. Is that for the equipment, the clearing the runway, and looking out from the facility, or the costs that are coming out of the town office and administrative?
The cost coming out of the town office. We have already increased, or the town has submitted their bills to the actual cost of clearing the runway and doing the day-to-day tasks already. Am I correct in saying that, Mr. Poole?
Yeah, the increase is due to the administrative costs. The whole number includes all of the work being done by the town.
Is there any consideration then for tendering out the work out of the airport? Is that something that is causing an issue with the town? Is there manpower required, or is there an off-season for you that works for you? Or is it more efficient just to do it yourself? Please respond.
You mean it's more efficient to do it ourselves? Like it's a sole decision of the commission to tender out who administers the airport? If they put out a tender, I'm guessing the only other bidder would be a private organization that would be able to do the work, you know? I guess the commission's budget is built up from portions of municipal contributions. So something, you know, all that would have to be decided, all this still has to be decided at the G5 between municipalities who are working on track. The answer to the question is the commission has to decide whether to tender for the administration of the airport or accept the town's cost to administer the airport as they are.
And Mr. Minish, just to add, I think that you were maybe referring to tendering out the costs of clearing the runway and the maintenance there. Our forces, or the town's forces, have been trained to deal with airport regulations. They have the training. I'm not saying that there's nobody else that can do it, but they have to be trained and qualified to be able to do those things out at the airport, if that was the answer to your question.
It didn't answer the question for a moment. I have one more question for your legal counsel that you have on staff, and that is Mr. Gray. And regarding the pool, I think the town is aware that there is an issue legally between the builder and the engineers and the architects and the community of Swan River. Can you update us on that without revealing any legal secrets, David? Or can you tell where we're at? Have we got to start getting some money back on this thing, or what?
Just wait, Councilor Gray.
Sorry, I had to unmute, I apologize. I can't answer that, I haven't finished it. Thank you so much for the question. Just before the 2018 election, council had launched an action as against the builder. That builder has now third-partied a number of people, who have also fourth-partied other people. We have gotten through a preliminary piece of the work. It has moved incredibly slowly, I will say. There is a legitimate claim against much of what we have to extend, although that number can be somewhat flexible at this point. We're not sure exactly what that number will be. The difficulty has been that we had sort of ramped up our council to move more quickly. There was, without getting into too much of it, there was some unsatisfactory movement initially. But that had ramped up. We were in the process of moving things forward much more quickly, I think. And when COVID came, the courts have shut down from March 15th to May 27th at least, and for civil matters, well into the summer, in all reality. The difficulty with lawsuits, as you know, is that they move slowly. And in Manitoba, they move particularly slowly, that it is often some years before you actually get into a trial. And so settlements are often at the doorstep of the trial because people that are feeling compelled to move forward and to resolve the matter. At this point, there are so many different parties who are suing other parties' contributions that nobody, it would appear, seems particularly compelled to resolve the matter. A number of the same parties were involved in the suit of the law with the city of Porch, Curry, that's our understanding, and those were eventually resolved. Their problems happened some years before. I could say that we had some estimates that the damage in total was somewhere in the $2 million range. Some of those claims seem to me to be a little bit of a stretch. If we keep our costs down, one of the ironies will be that our damages will be reduced. Although candidly, the work that was done, there were a number of issues, and you will know this better than, certainly better than me, in terms of those issues that were with the construction, in terms of putting in the HVAC system that wasn't really operational, which causes its own problems with the envelope. There were numerous problems with the hot tub that continued. So there are two tracks, and quite candidly, we have as a council divided those. One is we're going to move on getting the repairs done as quickly as we can. The second is we're going to try, as much as practical, to enforce return of whatever monies we've had to extend. The real difficulty is that the cost of recovery can often be almost as much as the cost, and so we're going to watch for that as well. I'm not sure if that answered your question completely, but there are limits to what I can say beyond that.
No, that's very well done, thank you, David. I'm sure the public appreciates you.
Thank you.
Councilor Dorian has questioned, and Councilor Mario, or a comment?
I just wanted to answer Mr. Minish's question on what the airport commission's budget was in 2019. It was $92,000.
Councilor Mario.
I was just going to comment on that I pulled up last year's budget. I'm looking at a total of $145,000. Reed?
Myself as well, that's what I did. Mr. Ganita sent me over the, he is the secretary treasurer of the airport commission, and he sent over the budget for me, and it was $145,120.
Corrected.
Mr. Minish, that answer your question for the 2019 budgeted, or budget amount for the airport commission?
Well, if it was $92,000, and we're going to settle a bill for $66,000 or $68,000 this year, whatever it is, we're paying more than we should. But if it's $145,000, I think we're basically fine in the best of ways. That does answer it, thank you, Mr. Wintoni.
Okay, further questions? Do we have any other questions? Oh, sorry, Jared, go ahead.
You had noted that there was a projected increase in protective services for the RCMP. Do you expect there to be an improvement in service as a result of this increase?
Go ahead, Charles.
No.
I do.
Or Councilor White, I guess he's the chair? Sorry. He's muted?
What was your question?
Maybe come forward a little bit, maybe then we can hear you. We have a question here in regards to protective services. Go ahead.
My question was if the increase in protective services regarding the RCMP, if there was going to be an improvement in service with that increase.
I would certainly like to expect that, but I can certainly say also, how can we, how can you measure that? I'm not comfortable to say that it would or would not. We would hope it would, but we certainly haven't, we debated hiring more officers. And the issue has been, how do you quantify, will more officers give us better service? So I think as a council, we're not really sure, in my opinion.
Councilor Wintoni?
Mr. Bergen, just to answer your question maybe a little bit better, the increase that you're seeing in the protective services category is strictly in the increases that we've been advised about in the existing force that we have. So that's going to be the increase in cost for the existing force that we have. To further clarify your question in terms of, will it be better? There's two ways to look at it. One is if you look at it in terms of, will the police officers do better? Will the police officers will do what they're able to do? In terms, it's going to raise some challenges for us. In the Dauphin jail closing, we'll be seeing officers that are going to have to transport prisoners from Swan River, not to Dauphin, but potentially directly to Winnipeg. We're looking at two officers that will be in that vehicle transporting those prisoners there. You'll see two less in our community. So to answer your question fairly bluntly, is that going to increase our services? It's not likely addressing any situation that we have in RCMP.
Councilor Gray?
There. Councilor Wintoni covered most of my points. I think that the explanation is that the cost and the service increases or decreases are increases or decreases are unrelated. These costs are related to pure contractual amounts and the amount of contracted members. It hasn't changed with this budgeted amount.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Deloria.
I just want to save face a little bit. $92,000 was the total portion contributed by all four municipalities to that budget. So I didn't pull a number out of nowhere. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
May I ask a question on the protective services?
You may.
Regarding Counselor Wintoni's answer there, particularly the one that is going to require prisoner transfer out of the community by two of our police officers, that's going to make it a minimum or less officers on duty in our community at any given time. And I'm sure David Gray wants to respond to that. But there is a sheriff's department that was in Dauphin located that did this transfer. So why isn't that being maintained so that we can maintain our police force in our communities? And we're in a situation in our community, we're semi-isolated. In fact, because we don't have air service, and we have, well, we can't transport them by bus. What would you suggest we do? What's the province going to do to help us out with this? Because our situation is kind of unique. We're different than, we're not far enough north to be north, we're not far enough south to be south. So.
You're absolutely right. Counselor Gray wants to respond tonight.
I can respond to it. You may want to, your worship. I would say this, the cost of those transports isn't being borne by us. And the plan, as I understand it, most recently promoted by Mr. Collins, is that there will be an increase in sheriff's services. The difficulty is that sheriffs work Monday to Friday. And particularly if you have a long weekend, or if somebody's arrested on Thursday, and there's something in a busy time, you can end up with situations where there needs to be transport. We already recognize, as the director of commander, that there's going to be a diminution in the number of police officers available to us as a result of that. Now, some of that will come from the fact that a larger number of the officers come from outside of the town of Swan River. And because of their contractual commitments, it may be that they won't pay actual members that we're paying for. But it still means that the number of people who are available to respond to an emergent situation will be diminished on a case-by-case basis. The decision by the government is the decision by the government. We actually responded to it and suggested that they rethink it. And I don't think that they could, they didn't listen to us, obviously. It is what it is. There's very little we can do other than potentially adding other people. And the bigger problem is the formula for which we, the determination of how you pay rates is. So persons outside of the town of Swan River and the RMs pay a relatively small piece. Counselor Morio, who is better than I can, he's on the provincial commission to talk to. And the reality is that that's a bigger problem for our budget than this interference. Although this was not helpful, it really isn't the biggest single issue that we have with paying for policing services.
That was a question Mr. Gray, and I posed to Charles, and I got a response to it today. And it seems to me that your budget last year for police services went up by $100,000, and you don't have any choice except to pay for them.
Exactly correct.
So if you're to relate that to anything else except the elephant in the room, which is protective services, the answer would be, well, your contract was for X number of dollars. Why are you sending a bill for Y? And how are they controlling these costs? I mean, how are they measuring the costs of the town as treatment fairies? And they're providing all repairs, not just the guy talking here.
No, you're absolutely right. The problem is that costs for RCMP policing are controlled really out of Ottawa, not even out of D Division, in the sense that the costs for officers are subject to a collective agreement that is related to the officers across the country. And so all of those costs, including the administrative costs, are what is divided up. I, you know, I've gone through, I went through at one point of the L, and it did not seem to me that it was inflated. And it is, our contract is, we'll pay those operational costs. So I bow to Counselor Morio or Counselor White, who's the chair, or any of the other more experienced councils.
I just want to read, I just want to comment on that, the transfers that you were talking about with the Dauphin Jail closing. And we had communicated and showed our displeasure with the minister. We actually had a meeting with him one day to see what can be done to alleviate some of those potential issues that it could create in our community. On the east side of the province, the province did create a different type of transferring system, and they are looking at the possibility of that. So we will continue to lobby the minister on this right now. Actually, I was supposed to speak with the minister about three weeks ago, but with the COVID thing, it's kind of all, has kind of put everything on hold. So until we get hopefully through this quicker than not, we can have a chance to speak with the minister, and hopefully they have a plan how they'll transfer patients.
I'm going to try to have the last word, but perhaps when you speak to the minister, maybe the position should be based in Swan River, where we have jails in Swan River, and we pick up, Mr. White is smiling, you see. He knows this to be true.
I agree.
You start in Swan River, and you pick them up all the way to One Big, and drop them on Big, and then come back, rather than going north and west. So logistically, it makes more sense to start in Swan River. Thank you for your response.
Yeah, thank you. Counselor White, did you want to respond to that at all?
No, I think we all agree on the principles. I think it's important for the community here, Counselor Morio, I'm going to defer to you shortly here, that council is just not looking at RCMP as one solution to the crime issues. Counselor Morio is on a couple committees, and one of the committees is sort of the possibility of a local police officer, so David, I would feel that usual.
Go ahead, Counselor Morio.
Yeah, so under the protective services budget, there's some increases. And it, as we've discussed with the RCMP contract, those costs are the costs that were invoiced early. It is a point of contention along a large number of municipalities that do have direct contracts with Ottawa for that disparity of leasing costs between an urban municipality and a rural municipality, as rural municipality is picked up by the province. And then we paid our contract, and then we have a grant from the province, which doesn't even come close to 50% of that amount. We also been advised that the RCMP membership has been given the green light to certify as a union, and we've been advised to prepare for the increase in their salary costs. As part of the agreement that they have and they're working on is that the RCMP will be to mitigate the recruiting and retention issues, is that they'll be part of the least one, or part of the top 10 paid police services in the country. And currently, I believe, the last figures I heard is that they're ranking around 25. So to bump them up, there's going to be some significant salary increases there. And if that brings better services to whatever, that's a debate, depending on what members you get and things like that, and their trainings and whatnot. So but there is a huge effort on the committee that I'm sitting on from the AMM, the Justice Advisory Committee, that's given recommendations to the province through the consultation that they have through the Police Services Act review on how policing is funded in the province, whether we use RCMP or they create a provincial police force, due to the fact that the RCMP have now grown to such a beast that they have detachments with excess of 100 members down to detachments that have two members, but they all operate under the same policies and guidelines, which makes it very difficult to operate, that they have to do this, that the way they need to until things change. So we're battling that beast with the RCMP. But we've also, as a council, of looking at other options that of the made-in-home or made-of-the-valley solutions, where we've increased our biolite enforcement line, where we can look at more of a dedicated biolite enforcement officer with different options that we're looking at that still need to be flushed out, where we can do enhanced biolite enforcement along with evening and weekend controls when we have some of our issues. And we'll start small, since we only, we're already a good part of the year through here, and then we can expand on that program going forward, where we have local residents or community safety officers or other organizations that we can look at, that we can more effectively get a handle on our local situations along with the big whole issue that we have to deal with, the social housing that creates some of these issues for it. But the decrease that you see in the protective services line, it's not only the police, RCMP line is going up. There are some increases in there, the biolite and the animal control section, to deal with some of the local issues that we have here currently. Since we've had, we're looking at restructuring and reorganizing that portfolio since the last individual that was in that position retired. And we've been unsuccessful in filling it as it is. So administration is looking at options to break those up and become more effective with them.
Thank you, Counselor Morio. I guess I also want to point and just mention, I think we talked about how, you know, the town of Swan River, larger municipalities do pay for policing costs. And we do feel that is not really a fair way of how things should be done. And that is something that the federal government, the province negotiates. And it's something that this council, as long as I've been here, has been lobbying at the AMM, and also before the justice minister, and there's been probably about two or three of them in that time that we have been lobbying. So we'll be continuing to lobby for some change to how the province will negotiate policing costs for everybody, not just the towns, but also just for everybody up there. Any further questions? Counselor.
Last, or this is Murray Mullen calling.
Yeah, go ahead.
Would I be able to, would I be able to ask a few questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. And I'm sorry I haven't, because I downloaded the previous one and did a bunch of work on it, and found out about four o'clock that there was some changes, so I haven't. So if there is, is some numbers that I'm not quoting, then I apologize for it.
No problem.
But the first thing is, is, I'll start at the top, under legislative. My question is, is town council taking a raise in 2020, or are they, or is it neutral?
In 2020, council's not taking a raise.
So the increase of $9,000 is for what then? The legislative part of it? Because I see that the last year actual was $133,000. The budgeted number goes up to $142,000.
Is Terry going to answer that?
H3.
Mr. Gueda, can you answer that?
With the changes that have been made since that original version of the national plan, the total legislative is now $137,610.
Okay.
But included in the increase is money for the video conferencing system that we're all using right now.
Okay.
We budgeted $3,000 extra for that video conferencing system.
Okay. All right. The next question that I have in.
Murray, just hold on. Counselor Gray wants to respond as well.
Yeah. Murray, I just want to say that in 2018, the federal government changed, I'm not sure if everyone knows this, so I'm going to go over it. All my colleagues know this, and any one of them could have said this. In 2018, the federal government changed the law that previously there had been allowance allowed, which was tax-free. And across Canada, municipalities then changed the way that people were paid so that the net amount was the same. And that effect, that took effect in early 2019. And then, because we had a difficult year last year, we recognized that the payments were going up. Council took a 10% reduction from that increase. The increase was an amount necessary to make us whole, for lack of a better word. But the actual total amount that council received has actually gone down 10%. In the 2020, that didn't take effect until we passed the biolite. So in 2019, that full effect wasn't seen. But in 2020, that full effect will be seen. So the increase is entirely related to non-counselor salary items. In fact, counselor salary.
Okay, we'll wait for Counselor.
The federal government.
Thank you very much. The next, in the general, in the legislative part, I also noticed that salaries for chief administrative office and staff has gone up exceptionally, almost 31% from the budget that I'm looking at. Is there a reason for that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so we've changed the structure of the, of the management around a bit. And one of the, one of the changes was to include an assistant C A O into management. The reason for that is that we need to have continuity, and we need to have succession planning. One of the problems that many municipalities have is that the C A O goes out the door, and nobody is trained to be the C A O behind them. And that's where towns make a lot of mistakes, is when they don't have a trained C A O to actually sort of steer the ship. So that's really the reason is that Patty Henkelman became the assistant C A O, and we brought on a new rec director, and that's what the difference in wages.
Okay. In protective services, there is, and talking about the policing, has there ever been any discussion as to, because I know there's about five communities in southern Manitoba with their own police force? And have you, has there ever been a, has the town ever looked in and done a study as to what their costs are compared to what we're paying for the RCMP? And as Mr. Counselor Morio mentioned, with the new contract that the RCMP are going to get, our policing costs are going to increase even more. So at what point in time does it become cost-effective to look at doing our own policing force compared to having the one with the RCMP?
Well, we, I'll let Mr. Kroll respond, but this has been a discussion around the table in our Cow meetings a couple times. But go ahead, Mr. Kroll.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that the council and the administration has been constantly looking into this. We've contacted several, several communities in southern Manitoba, as well as in northern Manitoba, to try to discern what best way to go for the town. You know, there's different dynamics, and you're correct. That's, I think that is one option that we should be looking at, which we are exploring all those, all those options.
Counselor.
So that's on the table then?
Yeah. Counselor Deloria wants to comment?
I guess just to comment, just a quick search, Eltona, the town of Eltona, which is similar in size to us. They have their own police force. They don't, they don't have an RCMP contract, and they spent $1.247 million on their police force. So just to, just to put that into comparison.
Okay.
And Counselor Morio wants to also speak. You want to reset there?
There we go.
Okay.
Yeah, Murray, just, it is one of those options we are looking at, and some of my colleagues on committees that I'm on do have their own police forces. One of the drawbacks to looking at that is your initial startup infrastructure costs and capital costs with that, because you would have to create your own detachment, all the capital vehicles, training. all the capital vehicles, training. And one of the other drawbacks that the other municipalities that do have this that are experiencing right now is their salaries of their members. Because usually they're the ones that are creating the higher salaries to draw members from the R C M P to their detachments. They, they have the luxury that sometimes they don't have the turnover that the R C M P does. So there's pros and cons that have to be carefully evaluated when we look at that in detail to see if that is a viable solution where we get value per dollar, if we go our own or we continue on with R C M P or a mixed police force, which is one of these issues that is being discussed with the province right now is what we call tiered policing, where you have ours, like R C M P are full-fledged peace officers at the top level down to volunteer groups like citizens on patrol at the bottom. And then in between, you have the, the mix of bylaw enforcement and community safety officers and whatever levels are in between to complement a mix where you don't have to pay a high level of peace officers, you can get same work done by a cheaper level. For example, like the city of Weddington uses the cadet program that deals with the, the minor infractions versus having to hire police officers. But yes, it is looking at, one of the things on discussions.
Councilor Gray.
There are three other things that are factors in the discussion that people should be aware of. The first is that simply the quality of policing. The reality is that it's difficult in small communities with a small attachment to get the same level of capacity of policing that you're able to get from the R C M P. So it may or may not be a viable option, even if there were a few dollars to be saved. Especially in a situation where we have a fairly high crime rate. What we do right now is spike this year, it may go down again, but, but that's one issue. The second is that municipal detachments have generally had some difficulty in interrelating with the police, with the R C M P when there are bigger crises going. And that has been a challenge in many of those communities. Lastly, and perhaps most importantly, in Swan River, our advice from, from the staff sergeant is that members that are designated for policing outside of the town of Swaniver often spend time in the town. And then in fact, the expectation is, in his analysis, and he's gone through that with us, is that we actually get time from those other members who are not actually paid for by the town in excess of what the opposite occurs. And so we would obviously lose that. So all of those factors need to be considered if we went to an own service policing. It's not off the table, but I think Councilor Morio, Councilor, Councilor Morio is exactly right. We're more likely to look at some integrated blend than going to our own forces. It is not an easy thing to transition. And once you transition, you really, it becomes impracticable to go back.
Okay, thank you very much. Sorry about that.
No, that's fine.
Hello?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, sorry about that. I have about three other questions, if you don't mind.
Yeah, go ahead.
In our, in the fire, fire section, again, it's, it's increasing by 33,000. Do you think that, and I, I'm not, this is, I'm just sorting this out. A community of our size, does it warrant having a full-time fire chief? Has that ever been considered? And the other question that I have is I noticed that we, in our capital budget, we are proposing to buy a, an incident vehicle for $8,000. And I'm just wondering, at this time, with the way things are, is that something that we should be looking at? And is it something that is needed this year especially?
Okay, so you asked several questions there, so what's your first question?
The first question is, is a community of our size, do we warrant having a full-time fire chief?
I don't know if it's appropriate to answer the question here right now, but council does review and look at all departments all the time. So what's your second question?
My second question is, is in your capital budget, there's, there is $82,000 towards an incident command vehicle. Now, is that something, has that been changed in this, in the, in the second budget? Or is that still on the table? And is that something that is needed at this time?
Who wants to field that question?
It's still on the budget.
It's still on the budget, yes. Councilor Doria.
I, I guess I'll, I'll speak to it. It is still on the budget. Whether, whether it actually gets purchased or not, that will, council will have that opportunity to debate that at, at that time. It won't be purchased without council's, council giving the go-ahead by resolution. And it's left in the budget, but I guess speaking for myself, myself alone, and I, I hope the fire chief doesn't give me laser beams with his eyes. But, but depending on how things go with the economy, the local economy and the larger economy, in my mind, that's probably, it's, that's probably one of the things that council might, or I, I would be considering to look at postponing until rosier times. As far as leaving it in the budget, it doesn't affect the actual taxes collected because it was going to be borne partially by reserves and partially by borrowing. And I guess that, the, the, borne by borrowing, I, I guess, I wouldn't want to be borrowing anymore money when, if things are not looking good financially with the local economy and, and with the, with the world as a whole. So that'll be a discussion council will have to have when that time comes to purchase that or to borrow that money.
And, and before I let Councilor Gray speak and then Councilor Friesen, I just want to say that there are a lot of pieces in this budget that will be considered as we go through this pandemic right now and how much it affects the overall operation of the Cow. Councilor Gray.
You're muted.
Can't hear you.
Yeah, I got it.
There you go.
Sorry, I apologize. I just wanted to comment on a couple of issues. First is that the revised budget, Budget B, as we call it, that actually has a short, small reduction from the budget. It has an increase from the actual, but a small decrease from the, from the actual budget. And in fact, it's a decrease from the 2018 actual. In addition, there are offsetting costs, you've noticed, I think, in the sales of service. So there are some of those. And council, I tell you, it won't affect 2020 as much. But we have moved to a model where for things like fire protection, when we are working out with, with partners in other municipalities. Remember that our municipal, the fire department in Swaniver covers all of the Swaniver, the rural municipality of Swaniver, part of Minutino's postment and so recently and even right now, the arm of, a part of the arm of Livingston. But our philosophy has been that that is much more like an insurance policy because of the wide scope of coverage, that all of those costs need to be borne, not on the basis of how much people use them, but on the basis that having that operational capacity is necessary for a safe community. And that, that each of those other municipalities will have to bear their share of that as well. Now, that's a change that's coming forward for 2021. But it is certainly an important step in both, in controlling those costs. And so I think as we get more, and the expectation is we're going to have a wider range of service, it's, the fire chief's position isn't just for the town of Swaniver, it's for a wider scope.
Thank you, Councilor Friesen. Councilor Gray just pointed out, I think Mr. Mullen has got the original budget out and the new one is not the same. So he needs to know that it's 255,876, which is an increase of 20,000. Okay?
Okay, and two other questions. Going back into your capital budget, we've got a backhoe for $98,000. And when Mr. Minish stepped in questions, Charles indicated that the current backhoe is a 2015 with 5,100 hours. Now, I'm not a, I'm not, I don't work in construction or anything, but is 5,100 hours a lot of hours for a backhoe? And then, and in how many hours a year do we, do we use a backhoe? And again, are we, are we required to look at replacing our backhoe? Again, we're borrowing, borrowing, and I realize that, but it's still a debenture and we have to pay it back. So is that something that's necessary?
Go ahead, Mr. Poole.
Hey Murray, everyone can hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, as I, as I had in my response, we do average a thousand hours on the backhoe. We use it pretty much daily throughout the year, so it is one of our major pieces of equipment. It has been, I know it's, it's against what I usually, I don't borrow for machinery because council allows me to have a reserve due to the, the garbage truck and, and the high purchase costs that are coming, sorry, that are coming in the next couple of years. I found it acceptable to, to borrow for this machine. But what's not said in the budget is that the, the interest payments and the payments for the machine will come out of the machinery, equipment reserve. They will not, they will not provide taxes, but I had to put it under the borrowing section of the budget. But that is the reason why we're borrowing for a backhoe.
Okay. One other question that, or actually I have two, pardon me. The garbage truck, $300,000, another capital budget purchase. We do have recycling under a private contract. Are we look, instead of spending $300,000 on a, on a garbage truck, is it something that we could not, I know other communities have garbage and recycling contracts that are done privately. I don't know when the new, the new recycling contract comes up, but is it possible that we could be doing recycling and garbage at the same time or simultaneously and possibly not have to make these purchases? And possibly our costs could be, could stay the same or, or hopefully be, be reduced?
Councilor Doria.
We, we've looked at, at options on garbage collection as far as internally moving to the, to the one-armed bandit style of truck. The issue, the issue with the, with garbage comes with the commercial dumpsters. All of the newer, newer style trucks with the, with the one-arm don't accommodate our current style of dumpster. The retrofit cost, really, it doesn't make sense to switch. As far as contracting it out, we have looked at contracting it out. And even actually just last month, we closed, we closed tenders on the landfill with the, and there was an add-on bid to, to do private garbage pickup. And we received no bids for, for the, for the garbage pickup portion of that. So it is something we're looking at, we al, we always have been looking at that. The, it would be nice to contract it out. Having said that, there, there was no, there didn't seem to be any appetite for it at this time. So we, we were faced with the problem of our current garbage truck. Last year, we, our, our backup garbage truckers broke down, our current, our main garbage truckers broke down. And we were picking up garbage for multiple times throughout the year with the, with the bucket of the loader, which when you're doing it with that, it, it's a very slow process. So we, we either had to move our main truck down to be the backup and purchase a new one, or we had to live with multiple times a year using the loader to pick up garbage, which was not working out, both due to manpower, it takes more manpower and it's a slower process.
Mr. Poole.
Yeah, that's correct. There's, there's, there's nothing else I can add other than, than we've spent the better part of, of three and a half years trying to find other, other solutions. And it does work out to be cheaper doing it in-house without the profits. We're, we're still trying to work with, with our, our contracted partners and, and other, other suppliers to, to try and get this done. It's the future, it's where we want to go, but it, it has to make sense.
Okay, Murray?
I think Murray's having some audio issues there.
Are you back on, Murray?
Yeah, I'm back on, sorry about that.
No worries. Did you, did you hear everything that Councilor Doria?
No, I missed some of it, but, but, and I apologize. I, I, my, my internet is, was acting up a little bit, so.
What did you hear?
Um, not very much of it.
Okay, well, I can try and repeat what I said. We've looked at, at contracting out. In fact, we, we had a, we had bidding last month with, when we had our landfill tender. We had add-on bids for, for private garbage collection. We didn't receive any bids. As far as doing it with, with, when we have gotten quotes on what it would cost, it's, it's worked out that our own forces have been able to do it for less money. So we haven't, we haven't taken up, a couple of years ago when we did ask for bids and we did get some, we, we stick, stuck with our own forces doing it just because it made sense, it did not make sense to switch at the time. As far as going to the, the one-armed bandit style of truck with the, like we have with the recycling, that, that would save us money in the residential pickup. But where it would cost us is converting all the dumpsters over to, to... overhead pickup. To convert our existing dumpsters, I, I believe it was about a half a million dollars to convert our existing dumpsters. And we, we could not get anybody to guarantee the conversion either. Even if we had spent that money and nobody would, would, would give us any kind of assurances on, on quality of the work because they, they couldn't guarantee with the metal they would be welding to. Some of those dumpsters are 20, 25 years old. So having said all that, we are, we are continuously looking at, at ways of, of getting a better deal. Nobody wants to pay through the nose for, for taking garbage to the dump. And as far as purchasing the new truck, last year we had, we had a situation multiple times. We've, we've put it off three years now, purchasing the truck. And Mr. Poole will attest the fact that I've probably been the biggest thorn in his side on purchasing the truck. I did not want to do it because I wanted us to move in a direction of, of the one-armed pickup style. But at, at this point, we have to bite the bullet. We had a few situations a, a number of times throughout the year last year where both of our garbage trucks, our main truck and our backup truck, were both broke down. And we had to pick up garbage with the loader, which is a slower process. We, we aren't able to do our routes in the amount of time that we've allotted to do it when we have the, the loader pickup. So I hope that, that's answered your question.
Okay, yeah, it does. No, and I am sorry that I've taken up so much time, but I have one final question.
Yeah.
It's in, it's in regards to the water and sewer. And, and I, looking at your, at your five-year plan, in 2021, you're proposing to do the lagoon design and construction at $7 million. And Mr. Minish asked the question and Charles got back to us and said, if the lagoon costs $7 million as estimated and it's financed over 25 years at 2% rate of interest, the annual debenture payment would be $448,000. Now, when I'm looking at the, the, the budget for the, for the utility, I noticed that we had about, a profit of about $350,000, which got put into our reserves. So if we're only got profit of $350,000 and our lagoon debenture is $448,000, I understand that you guys are proposing to go to the public utility board again. So does that mean that our water rates are going to be going up again when we had about an 85% water increase over the last two years? So my question is, are you going to the public utility board for another water increase? Or what? Or what are we doing?
Counselor Deloree.
Um, on the, the lagoon design and construction, our, our intention always has been to, uh, to, uh, go for, uh, three-way grants with that. Um, and, and those are never guaranteed until you actually have them in hand, and that's why we've, we've wrote and, written down the entire amount. Um, but our, our projection is that, that we would have a, a, a three-way split on that. Most, I, I would never say that all lagoons across Canada, but most lagoons across, across Canada are some form of, uh, three levels of government put money into them. So we're, we're hoping that our, the town's portion of that would be about a third. As far as going to the public utilities board, um, our intention would probably be to, uh, previous to this, it had been 18 years since we had last been to the public utilities board, and that's, you referenced the huge water rate increases. We don't want that to happen. We, we want to be forecasting what our, what our requirements will be, um, and be going a lot quicker than every 18 years and having to do an 80% increase. Um, so I, I guess, to answer your question, we probably will be going to the, uh, public utilities board sooner than 18 years from now, whether it's this year or next year. Um, we're, we're, we're not, uh, we haven't committed to anything like, we haven't even started a rate study. In a rate study, what it does, it looks at, at basically, like you said, what your, what your current, uh, uh, excess of revenue is over what your expenses are, what, where, what your projections are as far as what your, what your capital expenses and plans are, and are you able to meet that, and what do your rates need to be in the future to meet that? So, um, currently, if, if we're paying a third of that, our current rates would probably cover our debenture for a third of the payment. Um, if we don't get government grants, council at the time will have to evaluate what shape the lagoon is in and if we need to go ahead with it without government grants. But I, but I, not speaking for anyone else, I think we would, we would, uh, be looking for, uh, for help with that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Counselor Gray, do you have a question or a comment?
That looks to be more than covered.
Okay, uh, Mr. Poole.
I, I just simply wanted to add that the order that we received in 2016 stated we have to put it in the study. So a study will go into the P U B, it's mandatory. Whether, whether we'll get a rate increase out of it, uh, will be seen.
Okay, looks like we lost Murray again.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, we'll see if he comes back on. Um, any other questions from anybody?
Who can you hear?
Stan, we can hear you.
Okay, finally, a little rewiring here, it's, it's working. So I got, uh, a few questions. I've been scribbling on my last year's financial statement, in particular order, but I just wanted to give my opinions and ask a few questions. Um, is it public knowledge what the reserve land properties pay in the service agreements for revenue for the town?
Can you say that again?
See, is it, uh, public knowledge what the re, the two reserved properties in town pay for their service agreements?
I would think so.
Yeah?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't need it now, I just wanted to know for curiosity, see where we're sitting with, uh, you know, with, in, in regards to tax base and, uh, I know we don't get much on, uh, on vacant properties, so, I just wanted to know. Yeah, go ahead.
I, I believe that's, that's, that's information that can be shared. Okay, Counselor Morio.
Uh, just to follow up with that, Stan, um, those two reserved properties, their service fees that in town were an equal amount to what the municipal taxes would be. So there's no loss if you buy being reserved that in town.
Okay, how do you, how do you break that down? Do you, do you say, hey, uh, just pay taxes and we'll call it even? Or, or do you have an itemized list of garbage pickup?
We have an agree, we, we, we have an agreement, but they also pay like for garbage pickup and if it's OSS or any of those other services, they pay the same as anybody else does.
And then they're also assessed by our, by our assessor.
Right.
So that they're assigned a value and, and ta, taxes would be calculated. We just can't call it a tax, so it's a fee equal to what the taxes would have been. The real loser in it is the school division. The school division does not collect taxes off those properties.
Okay, well, that answers my question, yeah. So it's fair market value based on, uh, on their price of their building and their accessibility.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good. Um, I, I think the question of the $900,000, uh, by, by law, I think you changed it down to $600,000. Am I reading that right? Because of, uh, of what you feel is missing.
Stan, Stan, you come, Stan, you come in and out a little bit. Can you repeat that again?
Okay, can you hear, uh, can you hear me okay now?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, let's try this again. So, uh, the $900,000, you had a borrowing bylaw regarding that. Now, you've removed $300,000 as of last night based on that options provided by the province. Is that correct? So now we're looking at $600,000 for borrowing for the maintenance of the, of the rec complex?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Crow.
Uh, yeah, uh, we, uh, we had no intention of, uh, of setting it at $900,000 originally to start with. Uh, we're certainly not hoping to pay that, but we do need to get permission from the province to be able to fund that. So we wanted a number set high enough to be able to do it. Um, from my experience and my understanding in, in dealing with, uh, uh, the HVAC guy that, the expert that, uh, that fixed Porch Le Prairie, uh, he won't give me a number, but he did, he did indicate what neighborhood it was in, and it was quite a bit less than what everybody was expecting. So, um, I think we can do all three parts of that, uh, project, or those three projects, um, within the $600,000 and, and I, and I'm vetting to say that probably well within that $600,000. So, um, you know, the original number, uh, was really just set because we do have to approach the province to say we want to do this and, and, you know, get permission to do it, but that would have to go back again.
Okay, 'cause last year I was at the, uh, information meeting on the rec center, and, uh, they picked it at about $1.2 million for, for upgrades. So you've changed that back to not doing the full upgrades? You're just gonna do the HVAC system now?
Uh, no, we're gonna be doing the HVAC, we're gonna be doing all the repairs, and we're going to be doing the world tool. Um, this is, this is sort of my wheelhouse to do projects, and, uh, and I'm, I'm pretty convinced we can get it all done for, for that money. We're very close.
God bless you if you can do it, because it sure didn't sound like that last year. Uh, I hope it, I hope it was good.
And Mr., okay, Counselor Gray wants to, uh...
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No? Oh, maybe not? No, okay.
Uh, I, I was gonna answer the question, 'cause it's my portfolio, but it's fine, it's already been answered, so it's fine.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Stan.
That's, yeah, that's a bit of good news in a way. I'm glad, uh, that's quite a bit less than, uh, than most of the community expected. Uh, let me see. Oh, uh, fire department budget up, uh, $30,000. Um, I just wondered, it's, uh, fire department's dear, dear to my heart because I've been involved with it for, uh, for several years. Uh, but I've been on it for a bit. Um, I just wondered, uh, first off, I was just wondering about the, uh, quarter million dollars on the air pack that got spent, uh, about two years ago. Um, and, I mean, it's, it's water in the ridge now, but, um, in, in 2032, those things are gonna be 15 years old. This could be time to replace them again. So, uh, when you, uh, go forth and, and you're doing your budget deliberations, I hope you take a look at, uh, that kind of stuff that it is gonna come due. I know, I see with a, with a garbage truck, it's gonna be $300,000. That's a quick, uh, quite a bit more than, than it was, uh, you know, years ago when I was kind of involved in council, which is fair enough. But, but as these things, uh, get outdated, they, they have to be replaced. And, uh, when it comes to smaller equipment, I hope you take a look at, uh, at, um, doing it as, as economical as possible. Uh, having said that, um, you talked about contracting out and, and of, of snow plowing and, uh, different things, and the town forces appear to be able to, uh, to be able to do it cheaper or as cheap as anybody else. I noticed that the, uh, the fire truck maintenance and the, uh, snow removal is all contracted out to different companies. And I just wonder why we can't do, uh, truck maintenance in, in the, uh, town shop and why the town forces can't do snow removal. Um, $30,000 for the fire department in the, in an increase. What's, what's, what's gonna happen there? And they want that, I assume that's over and above the $80,000, um, command post?
Counselor Deloree.
Uh, ju, just the, the revised budget that came up this afternoon has the fire department at $1,000 less than last year.
Well, I got, uh, in here, so, show is, uh, uh, $264,000 this year and $265,000 last year, or next year.
It's 255.
Two fif, 255. We budgeted 256 last year.
Counselor Gray.
Yes, if you look at the actuals and, and the budgets over the last several years, um, the actual in 2017 was $237,000. The actual in 2018 was actually $262,000. Last year's budget was $256,000, but we actually had a shortfall in expenditures, which was good news, obviously. We budgeted, and the, the budget has come down even from what you're seeing, Stan, to $255,896. So i- it's right in line with what we budgeted in less than what we actually spent in 2018.
There's seen, uh, can anybody answer how many, uh, have we increased on the, on the call volume? Or we increased on different things? Because it seems like the budget goes up every year, but we're, we're not looking after RM of Livingston as, as of now for, until they come up with an agreement. Um, we're, our area, I don't think the coverage area has been increased. I understand we're looking after Bozeman now. Um, and that was another question. Are we getting, uh, paid to look after Bozeman? Are they going, uh, strictly mutual aid on those calls? Question mark.
Well, we, go ahead.
We, we are getting paid through our shared service agreements for looking after, uh, municipalities outside of us, unless it is a mutual aid call where they've responded and they're overwhelmed. Um, and I guess Chief Fedorchak, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's, uh, uh, for, we have three mutually partners, Livingston, Swan Valley West, and a portion of Minnetonka's Bozeman are shared service partners, so they're not mutually.
And, and further that, if Chief Fedorchak is there, he can also comment on as far as call volume.
Well, call volume has 70 remain the same between 85 and 110 calls a year. Um, where the increases are, are the increases that we see through our suppliers, which is 52 to 3% per year. Um, and our calls in Bozeman are under an agreement, uh, so they do pay some of our operating, which is, uh, under renegotiation for this year.
So, so that, uh, that agreement is over and above the RM of, uh, Bozeman and Minnetonka for the looking after part of their jurisdiction? So that the, at, at one point, the RM of Minnetonka's Bozeman spent $2,500 a year to look after some of that, some of that area, Civic Road and whatnot. Uh, is that increased then? Because I, uh, you look at, you, you go to all the calls in Bozeman now, don't you?
Yeah, that was down to the 2016 agreement.
Okay, thanks. Um, if, if you, uh, if you end up getting a, a command unit, where are you gonna park it?
So the, uh, the incident command unit will be going with the officer in charge, uh, to give us a quick response out for better, uh, better, uh, requisitioning of equipment in that bar for the incident that we attend to. For example, if we, uh, attend to a household alarm call, residential alarm call, for smoking, we don't have to have the whole fire department response. That vehicle will make the decision while it's there.
So is that, that's gonna replace one vehicle or an additional vehicle?
Um, the utility truck, the 2008 utility truck is up for replacement with our schedule. So that will replace that vehicle, and the utility truck will go somewhere else within the town system.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the bylaw enforcement, I, bylaw enforcement, animal and pest control, I noticed both of those, um, budgets, they go down, uh, $5,000 in bylaw enforcement this year, and then they go back up in '21. And same with pest control, go down $11,000, then back up in $11,000 in '21. What's the scoop there?
Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, so, uh, this year, we've, uh, clearly been shorthanded with the, uh, bylaw and animal control, so we have been able to, uh, to have, uh, less in that column. But we, we are expecting to have bylaw and animal control, uh, fully functioning effectively by next year, but certainly before the end of this year as well. Um, it's just something, something we're working on, so, yeah.
Are you, are you planning on, uh, hiring a new person for the bylaw and, uh, animal pest control? Um, or what's the deal? As I, I caught last night on, uh, at the council meeting that you gave a third reading to a new parking bylaw slash something else bylaw?
Yeah, that's the, uh, bylaw to actually set fines and, and, uh, set penalties. Uh, it really doesn't, uh, you know, it's, it doesn't have an effect on who is doing it. It just basically sets the, sets the, the penalties for when tickets are handed out and that sort of thing, so.
Okay, 'cause I, I, I see on the, uh, on the handy van that the town forces are driving that, that vehicle now. So at some point, you're gonna need, uh, another person or maybe people to do that. Is, is that kind of in the back burner? Is, uh, or is there gonna be some shifting in, in duties from some of the management in the, in the town?
Well, very clearly, the union doesn't allow management to do anything like that. That's, uh, QP is a big union and they work the same way all across the country, and we're not gonna be, uh, the anomaly, I'm sure, um, since we've already had some grievances. Uh, so, uh, we, we will, uh, fill the, uh, fill the handy van sometime soon. We're, we're working on these things in the background. We, we have advertised it, we've advertised it with the union and things like that, but there are hoops we have to jump through to be able to, uh, cover all these things. Um, and that's why the, uh, that's why the town forces from, from the Public Works have been doing this, uh, for the past, uh, couple of months.
Okay, um, are, are we full staffed with the Public Works people now?
Mr. Poole.
Uh, for the amount of work that's projected, uh, yes, we, we have, we obviously have some seasonals that, that will be coming back shortly, but I think that'll be determined with, uh, with the need for work with this COVID pandemic, obviously, with, uh, short of seasonals and, and students, uh, where, where we wanna be.
Okay, I gotta give you kudos last, for last year. Your town guys did a bang-up job on doing a lot of curb and gutter and sidewalk replacements, uh, patchy holes and stuff. Uh, downside is that we never got any, uh, capital water and sewer renewal last year. But anyway, uh, kudos to the guys who did that. And kudos to your, uh, greater operator too, doing a bang-up job this winter.
Thanks, Stan. I'll, I'll pass on the message, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, one last thing, um, uh, fire, back to the fire department. I understand you guys are going through an agreement with, uh, RM of Livingston. Uh, I would encourage you to give them fair value for it. Uh, charge them a, a retainer fee that's, that's, uh, palatable. And, uh, and if you have to, then do the, uh, do the, uh, as, uh, per call, um, per call out. Um, I think that's only fair, they're, they're our neighbors and our friends. Uh, in the 40 years I, uh, was on the department, I, I could count on one and a half hands how many times we were losing the RM of Livingston. And, uh, you, I might note to you that, uh, that the, uh, RM of, uh, Minnetonka's Bozeman, uh, gets upwards of $8,000 to go up into the Duck Mountains, uh, whether they go there or not annually. So, um, uh, the downside of that is apparently that money's going into general revenues. And I encourage, uh, anything that is for, uh, for the different, um, And I encourage anything that is for, for the different, um, department budgets that that go, go to those budgets, so. That's my last, uh, last, last thing. I'd like to make sure that the RM Livingston is treated fairly and, you know, keep in mind that, that everybody doesn't have a lot of money in this day and age. And that's about all I have for questions at this point. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you, Stan, and I, and I will say the, the, the process with RM Livingston is, is still in discussion right now, so that has not been determined yet.
Yeah, yeah, I realize I'm, I, I got a lot of friends and neighbors up there.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you. My first question is about the bylaws for reserves such as like the fire trucks, the machinery, equipment like, like that. I totally support having them, but my question is, is in those bylaws, 'cause I admit I didn't have a chance to pull the individual bylaws and read them, do we have a rule or a clause in there that actually prohibits that money from being used for anything other than it being collected for?
Well, that's interesting because we had that conversation just the other night, and I was for the understanding that if it was a bylaw set for, uh, you know, a, a reserve, that you'd have to use it for that, but Mr. Crowell has a different answer, I think, on that.
Uh, yeah, uh, hi, Karina. So, um, we, we had this conversation with the province this past week or week and a half ago. We have a daily or every two days conference call with the province ever since this virus started, and so all these questions get asked in the province and we get to hear what the answers are. And that was one of the questions, was can, can a council move reserve money to where they need it? And, um, and the province said, yes, it's, it's the council's money, it's the town's money. They do have to put an, effectively an IOU in that slot to say we have to pay it back, though. And, uh, and I know from my experience, when I first moved to Manitoba, the town I came to, uh, I was to understand that there was a seven million dollar reserve in all the different accounts, until we went to check the accounts, and there was nothing but eight or ten IOU notes to save if they owed the money all to all these reserve funds. So, yeah, it does happen, I don't know that, I don't know that Swan River has ever done that, but the option is there according to the province.
Okay, 'cause my concern there is if we're collecting reserves for fire truck, for example, I imagine those things aren't very cheap. So if we're dipping into that account for other expenses or funding other things and we have it sitting with a bunch of IOUs, when it comes time to, that we're in dire need of that new fire truck and we don't have anywhere near the money in the reserves to cover it, well, now you're looking at another debt and borrowing on the taxpayers done. So that's kind of where my concern is, is if we don't have a rule that says we can't spend it for what it's being collected on.
Uh, if I could just reiterate, the province was adamant that, that should only be done in cases of emergency, and that's why this question came up this past couple of weeks was, uh, you know, different CIOs from around the province, that's what the, the conference call is for, um, were questioning at what point, you know, if towns run into difficulty with their funding, well, at what point can they dip into these reserves? And, and the province was adamant that they are only to be, you know, things like that are only to be done in a case of an emergency where, you know, things have really gone south for the economy and we're really trying to stay afloat. Uh, Swan River is not at that, at that point, and, and most likely, I can't speak for council, but I, I don't know many on council who would vote for that without being in dire straits.
Okay, fair enough, that's all I was looking for on that one. I don't have it right in front of me, and I do have the old, the initial A budget or whatever with me anyways, but the town tends to grant money. Do we have any kind of an application process or some sort of a set criteria or priority for how that granting of money is handled?
Yes, we do. There is a, a process that we just came up with here just in the last few months, I guess it is, and there is an application that, uh, any group that is looking for grants that they can apply and go through the process of that application.
Okay, and is that gonna be made public at any time?
It is public now.
Oh, where does one find that information? That's just for tables and chairs.
Oh, okay.
But I think we were setting for the master, we were gonna get that out in the next month or two, I think, yeah.
Yeah, that's the, I'm, I'm sorry. The other one was on the table and chairs because we get so many requests for tables and chairs from the arena, but council is working with administration on expanding that to, um, grants that others are asking for.
Okay, so the grant criteria is not public yet?
Just no.
Okay, but it's coming down the pipe?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause when, actually, my next question was going to be on this mill rate here for the replacement of arena tables and chairs. Is that a high priority considering our current state of affairs?
I guess if, Amanda, do you wanna answer that question now or, or Counselor Gray?
I can go ahead. She wants, or I can do it. You have done me, there you go.
Go, go, go ahead.
Okay. Um, what, why it's still in the budget is we applied for grants, and, uh, so it's still, it kind of sets itself off. We have it in the revenue column as well as in the expense, so, uh, we did apply for a grant for that, uh, for, for those purchases.
So if the grant doesn't come through, is the town spending money on them?
No.
Okay, 'cause I guess they don't have the B one in front of me, so I don't know if that was pulled in the B budget or if it was still in there.
It has been reduced in half.
It's been reduced in half.
Okay. And that was all I had for questions. The others have been covered.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next. Mister Counselor White, you have a question? Okay, so if we don't have any other?
I got a question. Pretty good a question here that, uh, that I got, the person that's with me, and on line eight two nine zero, other cultural facilities, uh, goes from a budget of forty-two-hundred, the actual is eight fifty-five, then they moved it up to twenty-two thousand, and then for next year, the budget's a thousand. What am I missing here?
What line, what number, Stan?
Stan, um, it's, uh, eight two nine zero.
So capital one fifty?
Stan, yes, I, I can.
We, we, oh, okay, okay, you know, Counselor Gray wants to respond.
Well, it doesn't matter, Phil Campbell, it's, it's part of the earth, but it's, it's a Canada one fifty, we got a grant for almost all of that. Fifty thousand and something, and then, and then we topped some of it up.
Right.
So it's, it's the hundred and fiftieth birthday of Manitoba, that's what it's for, but we don't know that we'll, firstly, we don't know that the province isn't gonna reduce it, and we don't know that we're gonna be able to go ahead anyway, you know, get through COVID. But if we do, that's what it's about.
That's why we budgeted a thousand dollars next year, 'cause that probably won't be available, is that correct?
Yeah, more likely because it's the hundred and fifty-first year and it's not that big a party.
That's gonna be the hundred and fiftieth party next year.
That's right.
Thanks.
Thank you. Do I have any other questions? Okay, if that's it, then I will resolve that this council closed the two thousand and twenty financial plan public hearing, moved by Counselor Gray, seconded by Counselor Delory, discussion. All in favor? Opposed, it's carried. So the public hearing on that has now been closed.
Thank you for your information and that, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay, so continue on. Resolve that bylaw three two thousand and twenty being a bylaw to provide for the expenditure and borrowing of funds for the rehabilitation of the water mains, water and sewer services, road structure and drainage, and the provisions for temporary water services, including all auxiliary works thereof, on Main Street from Provincial Truck Highway number eighty-three to the CN rail crossing be read a first time. Moved by Counselor Gray, seconded by Counselor Friesen. Discussion. Counselor Gray.
I was getting ahead of myself, I was just voting.
Oh, you're voting, okay, no problem. So all in favor? Opposed, it's carried. Whereas section one six two one of the municipal act requires that every council must adopt a financial plan for each fiscal year in the, in the form approved by the minister consisting of an operating budget, capital budget, an estimate of operating revenue and expenditures for the following fiscal year, and a five-year capital expenditure program. And whereas section one sixty-two, two of the municipal act requires that before adopting the financial plan, the council must give public notice and hold a hearing in respect of the plan. And whereas a public hearing has been held, therefore being resolved that the financial plan for two thousand and twenty fiscal year consisting of an operating budget, capital budget, and an estimate of operating revenue and expenditures for the following fiscal year and a five-year capital expenditure program be hereby approved. Moved by Counselor White, seconded by Counselor Morio. Discussion. Counselor Latoni.
Um, I just wanted to, um, make one more point when, when we're voting on this. I know that we're in, in, uh, tough times in terms of, of a budget. We're seeing a, a reduction, um, in our budget. Just keep in mind, though, we're, I'm moving back to protective services, um, with our policing, yes, we've seen increase, an increase in our policing cost based on just the, um, expenses of those officers. Keeping in mind that we've had, um, our call volume that's nearly tripled since, um, about five years, um, we've lost a position as well, a federal position in the, in, um, in our, in our reserve, which is gonna put more strain on our officers. So just keeping that in mind, um, we did have a public meeting of, of, of the public who did stress that there, there needed to be, um, more put in, more funds put in for policing, uh, but looking at our situation now, that's not, not, um, totally happening, so I just wanted to share that information.
Okay, further discussion, Counselor Morio.
Um, I just wanna thank, uh, administration for bringing this forward, the proposals, um, especially being, um, almost completed, uh, with our initial budget and then having to respond to the letter from the minister about official, uh, budgets, so, um, like all of the budgets, they're all difficult, um, there's give and take in negotiations, and then with the COVID nineteen, it's brought another curveball to us in this whole thing, where we've managed to get, uh, a one point zero three mil reduction, uh, to the residents, um, which you don't see very often usually, um, it's always increases, so, um, I think, uh, administration needs to commend it for really squeezing the belt, uh, to come with a reduction, never mind just a status quo, um, to mitigate the additional costs of doing business, and then come up with actual, a reduction, which may result, um, or will result in some, uh, really challenging, uh, decisions regarding services and, uh, um, I think, uh, going forward, um, under this certain times, there's a lot of uncertainty, there are costs that are built into the budget that can be withdrawn as things go, uh, worse if need be, or we can stay this on the course, um, so, but I think this budget keeps the town in a good, uh, still financial position, and, uh, hopefully we can stay the course, so, thanks to the administration and the rest of the councils for, uh, hammering through this, and to all the, uh, public that's, uh, actually, uh, ever since I've been on council, this has been a stunning record-breaking participation by public, um, in this process, so, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Morio, and, and, and good words to all the team that have been working on this, uh, even though, even in the last five days, we had to come up, or they came up with changes to the, uh, options, I guess, for a different budget to look at, so, you know, thank you for all of that, what you have done, uh, and that hard work. So, thank you, Counselor Delory.
Not, not to regret to tell what you both have said, but I just wanna say thank you to, to administration, and also point out, I think, another record that was broke, this is the earliest we've ever passed our budget since I've been here, I don't think we've ever done one in April.
Okay, Counselor Gray.
There. I think it's, uh, well, this may be the earliest we've ever done it, this is actually not early enough, but, uh, it just, it just ironically here that this is the earliest we've ever done it, um, a quarter, a third of the way through the year, so.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Resolve that bylaw six two thousand and twenty, setting the rate of taxes for two thousand and twenty be read a first time. Moved by Counselor Gray, seconded by Counselor Delory. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Are you opposed? I'm just kidding. Carried. Resolve that special meeting of council now be adjourned. Moved by Counselor Friesen, seconded by Counselor Delory. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Or carried? We are now adjourned. Thank you.